Just as a disclaimer, I'm going to say when it's time for public comment, question, and answer, I'm going to ask that you speak up loud just like this as well, just so everybody can hear you. First of all, I want to thank everyone coming. This is the third importantly at-large council meeting that Councilman Sullivan actually started, and we're trying to have an all-hold community in this one. It's centered here on the east side of Rockton in Ward 5, the best ward. Okay, yeah, I put it up. So this agenda, it's pretty lengthy, it's pretty robust, so we're going to move swiftly through the agenda. And I want to first acknowledge the elected officials that are in the room first, definitely my colleagues and friends in government on the Rockton City Council. We have Councilor-at-Large Ms. Carl. Councilor-at-Large and one of our veteran councilors, Mr. Robert Sullivan. And my last minute introduction to the council, Councilor-at-Large, most of my biggest. We also have in attendance the newest councillor, Councillor Ward 6, Jack Lowly. We also have my friend and a New Bedford City councillor who came down because New Bedford and Rockton are often compared to hominid these sister cities. My friend in New Bedford, Councillor Hannah Rivera. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to stay, she had to wait till the end of the day. The Auditorium of Bunk's husband passed away, so she attended his services late. Our superintendent of schools, Catherine Smith, she was here, I just want to acknowledge her. And we have our executive director, did I just screw up you?
Yes.
Excellent. Oh, one second, Steve, sorry. Executive Director of Rockton Emergency Management Association?
Agency.
Agency, Mr. Steve Fox. And on the camera today, serving in dual roles, we have our Southeast Regional School Committee Representative, Mr. Mark Levy here. And Department of City Councillor Shirley Azat, Ward 7, she was not able to make it tonight, Rockton High had their own house, she has both of her girls there now, so she's very, her hands full there, so we wanted to thank her for sending her regrets to us this evening. Anybody else today, miss anyone? Okay.
As.
Huh?
The mayor's in front.
Oh, I love you.
Oh.
All right, so what we're going to do, literally, what we're going to do, though, is we're going to have our pledge of allegiance. We don't really have a flag in here, let's just stand in pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance into the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And in that spirit of unity, I want to ask like all the residents of the government, if they have any at-large things that they want to share with the community.
Thank you for being here. We have, as Shayna said, a robust agenda, she has put a lot of work into it. It's my privilege to work for you as a councillor-at-large. I'm keeping it brief, let's get to the agenda. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I too, first of all, I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your schedules to come here tonight. This is the third, as Shayna said, we had it in South Middle School and on the north side of North High School. This turnout was great. Prior meetings, we didn't have this many people, so again, I just want to thank you. Looking forward to hearing from you tonight, that's what the meeting's about. Thank you.
First of all, welcome, everybody, and I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues at large. It's a pleasure being here, and again, we're not here to try to talk to you or at you, but we basically want to hear from you, so we can make the best possible decisions to help every single person that lives in this community, in this city, so we're yours.
Thank you, thank you, councillors. I do want to also acknowledge, in addition to VCA, we have a representative from WGBH and the person of Emmanuel, Amen? No.
Gabriella.
Gabriella Emmanuel, I just want to welcome her here. Thank you so much for covering our meeting and being interested in our city. I actually have one citywide update, so I know some of you have approached me, and I'm sure you've approached my other colleagues, about graffiti in the city. And the city has a program where they're trying to get everything all cleaned up, and fortunately, I know a person who works for Keolis, and they do the bridge cleanings of Montello, Rockton, and Campello. And somehow, people have been getting up there, and they've been tagging those bridges like nobody's business, and they've been really trying to get those cleaned up. And that person that I know is actually my boss's sister, Sheila Lynch. And so I've started to make a professional relationship with her, and she's going to be keeping me up to date as to the projects that they're doing and keeping up the train stations. Also, they are very aware of the influx of kind of people hanging out at the train stations, and people may, they may not be feeling so safe, so they're working on that as well. And I will make sure that I make that information available to anyone that wants to know, but they are working on the graffiti all over the city with the bridges, and they work very closely with the Board of Health, too. Actually, the Board of Health gentleman is not here, but we can move on, so.
Shayna, I just want to put a bit of attention on that. I get a call from Denise O'Malley, relative to specifically graffiti going down East Ashland, look for Montello where Red Flora offices is. I called Mass Todd, and there was about a two-week delay, and they went up there with black spray paint, so I just want to echo what a colleague of mine said. It's on our radar, and a lot of times, timing, you know, we'd like to do it tomorrow, but a lot of times, the state's a little bit delayed, but they are working in collaboration with the city.
Thank you, thank you, councillor. A lot of that, and let me just say, this agenda was actually resident and constituent-driven. All of these items were items that folks had called me about, that they were concerned about, and, excuse me, knowing that the meeting was coming, I wanted to make sure we were able to get the experts in to be able to talk about it. So first official on the list is our own Chief of Fire Department, Chief Michael Williams. As you all know, as he comes forward, I'll just kind of explain how this got on the list. As you all know, the station over, one of the engines in the station on South Pleasant Street, it closes, it opens, it closes, it opens, and oftentimes, people don't really know why. So I actually took the time when I called Chief Williams, and he explained it very clearly to me, and I wanted to make sure that he was here to be able to explain the reasons that then happened, and kind of some of the plans going forward, and there's an update on it since, actually, this was drafted, so Chief Williams.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Nice to be here, nice to see everyone. Shayna and I did have discussions, again, the question is, and I know it comes from councillors, it comes from residents, is it interesting why the company on the east side gets closed every year? First off, on that aspect, we look at different criterias for our runs throughout the city go. Now, with my partner, I have six stations. Three of those stations are two-piece companies, the other three are one-piece companies. So it's really unrealistic to try and close a one-piece company, because that would just shut down the station altogether. So we have to look at the three, two-piece companies, and try and decide which one out of those three makes the most sense, or would affect the least amount of people, or run numbers. We do that. Obviously, my Pleasant Street Station is the busiest in the city, we really wouldn't consider closing one of those companies. It's very similar down in the Campello section of the city. We look at numbers as far as how often both trucks out of the two-piece stations are out at the same time, and we narrow it down to where we feel we would be least affected by closing one of the companies in a two-piece station. And unfortunately, that tends most years to be one of the companies in the east side station. In years past, we, I have a ladder company and an engine company over there, some years ago, we closed the ladder company and kept the engine company open. If anyone's unfamiliar with my situation, I went almost two years without a ladder company over there at all. Because of mechanical issues with my ladder truck on the east side, I was forced to run two engine companies out of there. That was the case last summer, so it really didn't make a huge difference on which company I closed. This year, we have ordered a new ladder truck, thankfully from the city, we were able to purchase a new ladder truck. In the agreement when we purchased the new ladder truck, they offered us a loaner truck while our truck is being built. That loaner truck was delivered back in April, I believe, we outfitted it for Rockton, thought it ready to run out of the east side. So two months later, when we decided that we were going to close a company over there, just getting that ladder truck into service, I felt that this year we could switch and close the engine company, to keep that ladder company that would work so hard to get reestablished on the east side, and keep that running. So, again, it's my responsibility as the Chief of Department to manage the budget, and part of that budget, or making part of that budget, is my overtime budget. And we have to look at how money gets spent throughout the year. And because of the collective bargaining agreement, a lot of the vacation time that the men earn is taken in the summertime. In other words, throughout the year, at any certain time in each group, I may have four people on vacation, but in the summertime, we have to double up on that, I have eight people on vacation. And what that means is I have eight less people coming to work, if I'm short in other areas, I have to fill that with overtime. And that's to keep nine companies, which is what we normally run in service. So we looked at the numbers, to drop just down to eight companies instead of the nine, in this past year, I'll give you the number, we saved over $120,000 in overtime money, June, July, and August, I'm sorry, July, August, and half of September. We reevaluated this with the mayor, and I discussed, the original agreement was to close it July, August, and September. My summer vacations ended the second week in September, so I felt that my overtime numbers were in a position where I could open that company earlier, which that happened this past Monday at 12:00.
No, I think I'll ask that if you have questions for any particular topic, if you could pull them to the end, and we do all the questions, and then we will address the presenter at the time. So I want to thank you so much, Shayna. Okay, another issue that is of great concern throughout the city, but it's, in my opinion, it's centralized or focused right here on the east side, which is the clearing of the tent city. And a lot of us weren't really aware when it was going on, even us, we probably got a call about an hour and some change into the project already being done, and the residents were notified even later than that. So there were some concerns that came to me in the form of, well, if you're cleaning up an area like that, and in my conversations with DPW Commissioner Larry Rowley, he mentioned the conditions of that area back there, they were unlivable, it's not, it wasn't anybody's home, it was absolutely deplorable. Mounds piled high of waste and all kinds of things, drug paraphernalia, cocaine tanks, violence, all kinds of things were happening in there. So after that happened, to clear away all of those things, it's an easy next thought to think, well, what about, you know, any kind of contamination? What about maybe some kind of dust up or something coming up in the air? And that was some of the concerns of the residents that lived immediately abutting that area, the streets there, Manchester, Tabor, all of those places by the tracks, Elliot Street, all of those places. So a lot of the residents were concerned. So what I did was I reached out to our state DPW office, and I was able to talk with Millie Garcia-Serrano, and she has some information that she just wants to share about that, and just to be clear, too, she and I, we've had, you know, very limited conversations on this, so there may not be, she may not know every answer to the question, but she is here and she's committed to taking your questions and then providing feedback, opening this dialogue, so that we can find out what's going on over there, so that it doesn't become another love field kind of situation. And also, too, she has a program that's coming out in Rockton that she wants to share with the residents, so Millie, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Hi, how are you? So hello, everybody. My name is Millie Garcia-Serrano. I serve as Regional Director of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. We're based out of Lakeville. Basically, our region manages all environmental regulations statewide with regards to clean air, water, wetlands, hazardous waste, USTs, spills, wetlands, coastal resources. So this is the state arm that basically deals with all of the regulatory enforcement permitting as it pertains to resources, environmental resources. Our jurisdiction, so we have, under our jurisdiction, 84 cities and towns, including all the way from Norwood down Seacong, Fall River, New Bedford, Cape and Islands, so it's quite diverse. We see also everything, we handle emergency response, we work a lot with Chief, our Chief Williams, so it's always great to have that wonderful relationship. In fact, I'm really happy and pleased that the city, some really great news relative to inland resources for oil spills. The city just recently entered into a memorandum of understanding with DEP for the acceptance of a trailer that has pretty much everything you need, Chief, in order to respond to an inland spill, absorbent pads, booms. Thank you, you're one of our, possibly, actually, two, you're the only two out of 84 communities that are equipped with this inland equipment that's very specialized to address issues in the Tocco River, so that's really great, thank you. And as you need more absorvents and booms, DEP is committed to ensure that we can replace that, those, that equipment at no cost, so thank you. So tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about a property that is currently owned by the CXX Transportation, Inc. And this is, this is a site that I unfortunately am not intimately involved in. Gerard Martin, who's our Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Hoist and Cleanup, he has every single detailed information, but I did review the file today in anticipation of council bars requesting that I attend, and some questions that I believe you have. So before I keep going, I just want to say, we do have an Office of Municipal Partnerships, and that will be leaving some information, which basically is, has been set out to ensure that municipals, officials have every single piece of information that's needed in order to conduct business, whether it's permitting, grants, any kind of monies available to do a whole bunch of things, we always love entering into partnerships with you. Tonight, I'm going to be focusing on a little bit on the question at hand, which is the Rockton Freight Yard location, and I believe that location is actually on the intersection between Elliot and North Montello Street. That's the area of concern that I believe you're here to talk about. And I have a lot of maps and things, and I'd be more than happy to spend a few minutes with you as needed in order to understand what we have in front of us. This is actually a site that goes all the way back to 1846, so it's quite an old site. This actually property was owned by, way back when, in 1896 through 1948, used as a coal and freight yard. So this particular property, as a result of past operations, spills, just what happens with these types of operations, there was releases of oil and hazardous materials that came about. It's a 31-acre site, it's a parcel that is located in a mixed industrial-residential-use area. The property itself is very inactive, so it has not been active in the past 20-some years. And it's pretty much sitting idle, which I think unfortunately invites a lot of trouble, when you have a vacant home, vacant property, no one knows what happens, and so that is the situation. I have to say that, however, there is a party at the table, which is the property owner, and the property owner is CXX Transportation Incorporated. We reached them out, and they're located in New York. So we were able to track them down, we've been working with this party since they called in the Mass DEP to report a notification that was needed, and triggered as a result of the concentrations of environmental contaminants that were found in the soil. So they called us in 2007, they immediately commenced working on what is it that I have here, they characterized the site. They found metals, mainly lead and zinc, PCBs at high concentrations, as well as petroleum hydrocarbons. So they have been in our system since 2007. The program, so the program that they're working on and regulated under is called the Waste Site Cleanup Program. This is our superfund law in Massachusetts. So we have the US EPA, an environmental federal agency that deals with superfund sites, sites that are abandoned. The property owner has claimed bankruptcy, you can't find them, the US EPA agency in Boston, in Region 1, basically, it's in Boston, they take over the response action. We have a very similar law that's pretty much mirrored after the federal, and that's the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. This particular law is based on liability that falls with the party that causes the oil and hazardous materials contamination, as well as the party that owns the property. So Mass DEP, the state, does not really care who performs the response actions, our job is to ensure that we find the party that can, and if it is not possible for the party who owns the property to perform the response actions, then Mass DEP, the state, steps in and performs the response actions. I'm happy to say that at least the party is not bankrupt, CXX is not bankrupt, they're at the table, they've been performing response actions in accordance to what they need to do. Now, how it starts is with discovery of contamination that was done in 2007. Then they assess the property, in other words, what exactly is there? I have a lot of maps that I'd be more than happy to share, and all these yellow dots basically symbolize locations where contamination was detected. And so once you identify the exposure locations, that basically gives rise to developing a plan to clean up that particular area. In this case, the good news is that we do not have substantial groundwater contamination. There is some groundwater contamination that we understand, based on the CXX reports, they have retained Arcados, that's the consultant that appears to be on the file, performing all the work. But soil is what needs to be addressed here at this time. They, also, we work with, again, the federal government in situations where we have over 50 parts per billion, excuse me, million of PCBs in the soil. When this happens, we reach out to Boston, EPA, the federal arm, we get together, and basically, we coordinate our jurisdiction, to ensure that both federal and state folks are coordinating the response actions that the liable party needs to perform. There's been a lot of dialogue that very recently happened, starting in January this year, because this site so far, based on what my understanding of the file, they have already navigated through Phase 1, which is the initial discovery, Phase 2, which is how, what's the magnitude, the nature and extent of contamination, they have done that. Those are these maps, and I would be more than happy to share these maps. Phase 3 basically speaks to, do I have a problem, and if I have a problem, how am I going to resolve the problem? Phase 4 is actually the implementation of the selected remedy to address the soil. That's where we are right now, we're in Phase 4. Before, there's a lot of discussion in terms of the selected remedy, I don't, based on the review of the file, this appears to not be a called, a public involvement project, a PIP project. And what the PIP project is, at certain milestones, the party that's conducting the response actions come forth and share that information. Thank you, councillor, for bringing to our attention that apparently there were no meetings that were put together by CXX or others. I have to tell you, though, it's very interesting, we have over 50,000 sites across the Commonwealth, and it is a privatized program. So in other words, we understand when the incoming call comes in, that there's an issue, we track the progress, this is moving in the right direction in terms of ensuring that the soil that's currently contaminated is addressed. I went back to files today also, and it appears that there was some tree clearing that happened, I guess, in July, because I was able to find, I was able to find a notice of intent that was filed with the local conservation commission. What that means is, is that they need to do some tree clearing and brush in order to address a number of issues. In my estimation, the purpose was really three issues. The first one, based on the file that I read, had to do with the ability of the responders, the first responders to get in there, to ensure that whether it's rambles or bushes, they can actually get there and do their job, because it was really overly vegetated. So that was the first reason why the request to the conservation commission of your city that came about. The second had to do, sorry, let's see, with the discouraging trespassing, so from entering the property, so basically trying to signal that this is a cleared area, we don't want really trespassing, not appropriate, we have a lot of issues there, whether it's safety or otherwise, but more importantly, in my mind, at least from the angle of the needed cleanup, the soil cleanup, what we're talking about is ensuring that we can start that tree clearing process, so actually, we can start getting the back hose, while the CXX Transportation can actually come in and perform the response actions. Again, this is not a state-funded action that's happening, it's a private action, we're literally just overseeing the work, ensuring that when they say, I'm going to be cleaning up the soil, to the risk-based protective cleanups, cleanup numbers, to ensure that that really is happening, because the last thing we need is an action that is not going to be protective of human health and the environment. The PCBs, which are polychoroneated by channels, they are, they're something that possibly, councillor from New Bedford, she's very familiar with, she's done a lot of work in the PCB realm, because New Bedford has a lot of PCB contamination, so there's a lot of traction in terms of state and federal involvement with these kinds of contaminated soils. So again, any kind of site that has PCBs, there's no exception. There is a very conservative, very low level of cleanup number that needs to be met, in this case, is one. We are talking about concentrations that are above 500, so we need to arrive at a plan to address the 500 and upward PCB concentrations. This is where the DEP gets in, involved. The DEP gets involved when we have a situation where we want to make sure that the cleanup is protected. That work has not commenced, that work will be at some point done, and...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, really, if we could just all pay attention to Millie, she's giving some really good information, thank you.
That work hasn't happened in our files, what we have, and this is all available, it's public, available public information, I'd be more than happy to give you the link, everything, every single report is available electronically. And again, I was able to find some information just doing the file review, so that I can prepare for you tonight, everything is pretty much there, laying out the findings. I can tell you that in reviewing the information, it appears that 5,000 tons of contaminated soil need to be excavated. I was asking myself the question, what is the selected remedy? It appears that CXX and Arcados is actually looking for excavation, stabilization of the left behind soils, just to make sure that nothing is leaching, and any contamination that is very heavy, heavily contaminated soil, the idea is to ensure that it's trucked off-site, so it needs to go to a facility that actually is authorized to accept these contaminated soils. Then obviously, after the material, the contaminated soil is excavated, they do some confirmatory sampling to ensure that we're not leaving contamination behind, and then it's cleaned up with, it's backfilled with clean soil. So the foreseeable future of the site has not been determined by CXX, based on what I read in the file tonight, appears that there are many choices, it could be developed as commercial, it could be residential. It could be developed as commercial, it could be residential, it could be, I heard, based on the file, again, just going through it, appears that in the past, there was some interest by the mayor's office, I believe, in terms of trying to figure out if we ever took this property. And I think it's an interesting question, because we get a lot of phone calls from a lot of cities and towns across the Southeast region, and talking to other colleagues. That's why this municipal office of partnerships and governmental affairs was set out, to ensure that before any community decides to acquire a property, say a property goes bankrupt, they're not, they're not familiar with the environmental liability, they will give us a call, we try to help them out, to help them make that decision. So the city has expressed some interest in the past, but obviously, unless CXX, with the current property owner, decides that they would like to sell, it's not going to happen unless there's some discussion at some level. So all we know right now is that, again, working within the confines of this privatized program, the DEP oversee, having the ability to step in and basically redirect where things are going, because it's a privatized program, we want to make sure that what's happening at your site is happening in a way that's protective of human health and the environment. We have that authority. We're pretty much at this juncture right now, reviewing a Phase 4, which is, no decisions have been made, but basically talks about, here is where my nature and extent of contamination is, this is what needs to be excavated, and this is what I plan to do with the soil. These are, this is basically a document that was not put together by the state, put together by CXX. And again, it's, it's, it's available, and I'm happy that we're here, so that we can definitely go over. And again, I just did a two-hour quick review today, but more than happy to ensure that, you know, prior to any decisions, I will definitely be contacting CXX, so that affected parties, neighbors, abutters, because obviously, this is an issue that will bubble up to the city councils and the, and obviously, the community, through potentially the MEPA process, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Protections, Protection Act. So through MEPA, if you have a lot of truck traffic, noise, future dust issues, any of those triggers, that actually warrants some good in-depth consultation with the affected parties. So I'm just very honored to be here tonight. One thing that I wanted to let you know is that, in my file review also, I guess, by the way, the city has a really good website, and I was able to, you know, just look it up, all of you, and kind of get a little sense for every single working at the schools, and different, all sorts of different sort of areas in jurisdiction. There is an approved, and it's really wonderful, it's a downtown Brockton urban revitalization plan. They really encourage you to read it. It really truly puts together the discussion with regards to how to move the city forward even more. I mean, it's, it's really a city that's really truly world-class, some great ideas, a lot of really hard work is happening here, whether it's securing finances. DEP often does not have the money, sometimes we do, but obviously, the US Environmental Protection Agency has a lot of money that we love to facilitate to cities like Brockton. And you have some great grant writers. And so, the question that I had had to do with the urban revitalization plan, and whether this location was co-located within the circle of the urban plan. It isn't. The CXX property appears to be maybe half a mile to the northeast, so it's outside the actual circle. However, I think it's really interesting, the idea to attempt to come up with a better plan than what's happening right now, which basically invites a lot of trespassing, a lot of unnecessary nuisance issues, in addition to unnecessary exposures. I'll stop here, and I really appreciate the opportunity to at least, you know, try to navigate through the files, but I'm going to stay here until every single question is answered.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was very in-depth, and I just want to thank her for coming down, kind of on a short notice situation. Getting in touch with her and her colleagues, it was really, kind of like a red tape-y thing, but as soon as I spoke with her on the phone, immediately, I'll be down there, "What do you need?" This is what I have.
More than happy. And I know that recently, for example, there was that three, four, five alarm fire that occurred. And so, I know that we, again, we reached out to the US EPA agency, and often, they will deal with asbestos, this is the asbestos piece, which unfortunately, I'm not 100% prepared to discuss, because I have limited information. But what I can tell you is that the asbestos debris itself, that already will be, we were really happy to reach out to the feds, they very immediately came to the table, and they will be trucking away all of the asbestos debris. So that's really fortuitous, that at least, you know, we have a very difficult situation with a property owner that's managing the devastation of a fire. And so, being able to at least have that assurance that we have the support of the federal government, it's really great.
In that area she's talking about, if you remember, the antique building there right on the corner at Elliott and Montello. It's covered now with that white tarp, but it's all pretty much asbestos. So I'm so glad that somebody's eyes that can do something about that are on that. So we're going to get that taken care of. Thank you again so much for coming. Thank you. Oh, okay, okay.
So ladies and gentlemen, just to kind of piggyback on that, what Counselor Lott said earlier, it's accurate, the city council was notified vis-à-vis a voicemail message from then Chief LaStef, Mr. Buckley, for the mayor, probably an hour, an hour and a half into the process. What I did as a counselor at large, is I followed the resolve, and all my colleagues supported the resolve in July. And what the resolve said was, why would public resources, police, fire, border health, go onto private property and evacuate and remove these people? If someone went in my backyard tonight and put up a tent, I couldn't necessarily use the city block of resources, I'd have to go through the court system. So the mayor came before us, the chief came, police chief, the border health. What was explained to us is because it was a public necessity with health and safety, they went up there, propane tanks were there, tons of deetles, were hypodermic deetles were removed. But at the end of the day, what we did get from the mayor is that CXX reimbursed the city of Brockton 100% at any and all costs associated with that removal. So that was a good thing, and I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting that endeavor. Thank you.
And I do want to take this time now, actually, to recognize a very, very important gentleman who has joined us, and I'm so glad that he came all the way from Boston. He is the Director of Community Affairs in our Lieutenant Governor's Office. My friend, Hodaire Callie, is in the back. Thank you, Hodaire, for coming up. And I wanted to invite him, again, and that's why I invited my colleague as well, I wanted to invite them all, so that everybody can see that we're branching out, we're developing relationships, we're networking outside of Brockton, to make sure that Brockton stays on the eyes, and on the lips of folks that can allocate funds, can share ideas, best practices, all of these things. We're not an island, so we need to make sure that we reach out, and we have a great relationship with all the several communities in the area, and with our governor and Lieutenant Governor's Office. So thank you so much, Hodaire, for coming. I do want to say really quickly, I want to now recognize our Ward 5 City Councilor, Andrew Rorabai is here. He will speak later, but our very own patrolman extraordinaire and crime watch coordinator, Officer Bill Ely is here. And on your agenda, for those that were able to get one, and I'm sorry I didn't make enough, I really wasn't expecting all of you to come, but thank you. The Border Health Code Enforcement Officer, Patrick Blodgen, he was scheduled to come, and he's actually been texting me, he's in the hospital, unfortunately, he has fallen ill suddenly, so he was not able to come to talk about kind of code, but, in his absence, my colleague and friend, Counselor at Large, would you like to say something about code and give his expertise about that to Counselor?
I can't possibly bring the level of expertise that a full-time Border Health agent could bring to the meeting, but I do want to talk a little bit about code enforcement, because I think many of you may have read a notice, but I kind of have a passion for that issue, because I think to the extent that we fairly and impartially enforce our codes, we will have a better quality of life, not only in neighborhoods, but in the business community. And we mentioned code enforcement, it's actually a very comprehensive process. There are electrical codes, there are plumbing codes, there are fire prevention codes, there are health department codes, there are conservation commission codes, there are building codes. The state building code is probably about four and a half inches thick, which our building commissioner has to apply to construction projects and new construction. So I have tried to, and my colleagues have supported it, kind of ramp up our attention to detail, pay attention to the different codes that need to be enforced. It seems to me that if we're going to commit probably 10 or 15 years to an urban renewal plan downtown, then all of the feeder roads that go through the neighborhoods and go through the city to get to the downtown should look as great as they possibly can. And so, when I ride by a place that's licensed for 10 vehicles to be repaired, and I see 25, when I see a yard that really is a junkyard and there's no Class 3 junk license, that bothers me, because I have to tell you, folks, we're not going to attract people downtown unless we address some of the public safety issues that are there now, and we address the code enforcement issues throughout the city. So while Mr. Lott is not here, I just want you to know that the four of us, you may have noticed, work as a team. There is no I in trying to get things done. And collectively, we all come from different backgrounds, we all come from different age groups. For whatever reason, I always end up being seated near Jack Lally, probably people thinking my grandson, I don't know. But we have a great time, and we have a spirit of cohesiveness, cooperation, information sharing. So I'm going to keep pushing the code enforcement, warning to my colleagues. And I think education is first. I do not believe in going out into the business community and trying to shut people down, and haul them off to housing court, or otherwise make their life miserable. But I do expect that if we go out and we say, "Look, this is what's required, this is what your license calls for, we're asking your cooperation." The next time we go back, if there hasn't been any degree of cooperation, then I think you have to take the next step. And in some cases, that would be having a licensee come in before us, because the city council issues certain licenses in the city. If that fails, then of course you can take adverse action against someone's license, and you could suspend it for a short period of time, or if the conduct is especially egregious, you could revoke it. But basically, what I'm hoping is, we'll all work together, we'll educate people, particularly people who come into the city and want to open up a business, because ordinances vary from city to city, and bylaws change from town to town. Let's educate the people, let's help them be successful, but in return, let's ask them for their cooperation as we try to make the city look better in every neighborhood, every street. I don't think it's asking too much, if we're going to embark on a bold adventure of doing over the downtown, we can't forget the rest of the city. So I ask for your support, I hope you'll follow what we all do as counselors at large, and I hope you will take an interest in code enforcement, because it affects your property values, it affects the entire value of the city, how we are perceived outside the city. If someone drives down Montello Street and they look left and right, they see abandoned cars, and pieces of automobiles, and broken fences, and businesses that are operating improperly, they're not going to come away with a positive attitude about a great city like ours. So thank you for your support, and any questions at the end, we'd certainly be willing to answer them.
Thank you. Moving right along, I did want to give my colleagues a chance to give any ward updates, if they'd like to do that, Counselor Lott, anything in Ward 6 that you would like to share with the folks here and the folks at home? See, Counselor Jack Lally, everyone.
Hello, everybody. Right now, in Ward 6, it's pretty quiet, currently I'm, currently I'm working on, currently, currently I'm working on getting a couple of streets made public, you know, publicly accepted ways, that's one of, that's one of our big problems up there, so that's, that's something I'm hoping to get done, so they can be eligible to be paved, if people pay the same taxes, fees, bills, everything is, everyone else, but they're stuck with a road that's consistently decaying with no help, so that's, that's the current goal. Otherwise, I think that's what I get the most calls about. The sports complex that was, that was proposed is, the bidding's coming to an end soon, I believe, and so I will be a part of the, the, sort of the group that decides which bid wins, and then we can get progress rolling on a sports complex.
Thank you, Counselor Lally. Thank you for all your hard work up in Ward 6. Run very well by former Counselor Dubois, and Counselor Lally has taken the baton and has gone forward with it, so thank you. And just in, I want to make sure I recognize, not to put him on the spot, but our newest state representative, Jerry Cassidy, and he's going with us tonight. Counselor Borger, if you'd like to give any updates about Ward 8, or you want to just walk over there and...
Well, welcome to Ward 5, Dan.
Counselor Borger, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, I might be the shortest city councilor, but I'm also the loudest city councilor. So, all right, Dan, this is Ward 5, welcome to the ward that has an institution of higher learning that's going to be celebrating 50 years, 50 years, yes, Massasoit Community College, right, a few blocks away from here, and they've helped thousands of people have better lives with an education and improving their lives and the lives of their families. And right next door to us is Signature Health Care Brockton Hospital, over 100 years old, celebrating not only that, but the fact that they're going to expand and offer services and treatment for those with cancer, unfortunately, and so they won't have to go all the way into Boston. But at this, they'll have the best doctors from Boston, yes, Harvard, and, and, I'm sorry, Beth Israel, and that is a really, you know, positive opportunity for us, it's also going to employ more individuals. And yeah, Ward 5 also has part of downtown. I'm afraid we weren't the part of downtown, that it's going to be in the movie, what can I tell you? But we're the part that is having some interesting challenges, and we're going to continue debating those. But we also have the historic Brockton Public Library, and we have several other continuous activities. I'm going to make a few announcements here, and I apologize if my colleagues have already made this one, but one of the best things about Brockton is our phenomenal public school system. Like everything here, it's not perfect, but a lot of people have great opportunities here, and we want to announce that as many people as humanly possible, we'd like you to be at the Red Cafeteria next Tuesday night, September 20th, at 6:00 PM, because we're going to have a guest. And this guest actually is pro concerns that we're not necessarily pro for our public school system, and yes, okay, I will, it's a public forum for the Commissioner of Charter, DESE, which stands for what, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And yes, this is, we really, regardless if you have kids that are in schools now, you might have had them before, you might have them in the future, okay? And the schools make a community very viable, and they offer tremendous opportunities, and we really, we really highly encourage you, even if you come for five minutes, to put your name there, because this gentleman was Commissioner Mitchell, we had that down here, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell, Ms. Mitchell Chester, I never get the poor man's name right, but he doesn't always have some good news for us, so we'd like to give him, how would I say, our view, I mean, after all, we are paying him, directly or indirectly, about what we want for our schools now and in the future, okay? Also, I want to point out that we're going to have some ward meetings. Counselor Azat will have hers on Wednesday, October 5th, at the Reardon School, and I believe that's at 6:30 PM. And I will be having our, ours for Ward 5 at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 27th, at the Enzo Flats Enterprise Block, the intersection of Montello and Center Street, and so we can get some information on exactly what's going on. I'm going to tell you three things, the city seems to be able to spread misinformation... The city seems to be able to spread misinformation faster than some places can spread a virus. Okay, what we want, we have plenty of information, plenty of challenges here. We don't need to pass on misinformation. So, what we're trying to do is continuously educate you. But always remember, you can come to an ordinance committee meeting. Please do. You can come to a public safety meeting. They're all open to the public. You can come to an accounts committee meeting, which we're going to have at 5:30 on September 19th. And you're welcome to all these various meetings. They're involved, sometimes they're boring, sometimes they're shocking. But nonetheless, you're invited to them so you can learn the real information. We do as much as we can to possibly pass it on to you. And most of us don't have the time to create false websites on misinformation. Sorry about that, but we're just trying to give you the real thing here, okay? Meanwhile, I want to emphasize that we're here to service you. We're here to provide you with information. We are human. This is supposed to be a part-time job, so we try to debate, you know, when to call you back, et cetera. So, I'm known for taking a few days to call people back. The other thing, my colleague here is nervous. She goes to Ward Five, and that's why she's panicking. But anyway, what we want to emphasize here is also, we have an election on November 8th. If you are not ready to vote, you still have time. This is huge, not only at the level of the present, which is quite huge, but you have ballot questions, you have state reps races, you have county commissioner races, you have sheriff race. And really, you know, it's really important for you to realize just your responsibilities here. And particularly those of you that are parents and grandparents because you have generations that you need to, how would I say it? Realize that they can be empowered by participation in government in all facets. We encourage you to participate. We encourage you to be a part of all this. And no, it's not all I know it's here. But we particularly want you to realize, if you have a question about something and a concern, because I have a few. I've been driving one of my colleagues crazy because we're concerned about the Garry building and just exactly what's going to happen to that. We're not letting that go. It takes us a while to get responses. Some people try to avoid us. And you'd be surprised how many sometimes. And we try, okay? And I cannot emphasize that enough, that it's a little bit more involved. And you realize, we're ready to give you the information. And like I emphasized, it's involved at some points. Sometimes it's very direct. And come to these meetings, regardless if they draft a commission, regardless if they're licensed commission, planning board, or wherever, because they all have to do with you. So, and they're posted, and we can pass on the information. You have any questions? My cell phone number, I'm getting really brave here, But here's the deal. Tell me what it is you want to know. So, if I get your message at 9:31, the next day I can call you and say, "I have ears," that's pretty cool. It's not always the case.
And in the spirit of being direct, I'm going to thank Councillor Boraga for giving the update.
Don't go anywhere, listen to this, yes.
Gina and I would just like to say, she may be short, but don't mess with him.
She's Brockton's little treasure.
If you're not from Boston, she'll go right through you and get you off the road.
Thank you, Councillor Boraga. And again, she did mention it really quickly, but Superintendent Smith did ask me to mention the meeting on Tuesday, the open forum. It is at, excuse me, 6 o'clock, 6 to 7. It's a public forum next Tuesday, the 20th. And the Commissioner for Charter, schools will be there, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's in the Red Caf. Also, she's asking that everyone come to that meeting and stay for the following meeting, which is the regular school committee meeting. And they'll have a presentation, I believe, at 7:30 in the Little Theater at Brockton High. So, you'll already be on the ground, so might as well just stay for both meetings if you can. I did want to give Officer Healy a chance to come and address the residents and to talk about any kind of updates that he wants to share. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Officer Healy. Wait a little while, the stereotape.
It went over everybody's head.
I got it.
Good evening, everybody. Once again, thank you for inviting me. I get invited to all the ward meetings. And I'm here for two reasons, to give you my contact info, most importantly, and I guess it's going to be a Q and A. Any law enforcement questions you might have, I'm going to be here the duration. Easiest way to reach me to set up a crime watch meeting is to go online the Brockton Police Department website. Online, click on either crimewatch@brottonpolice.com or my office number. And you get me either way. Also, on that link, when you go to the Brockton Police Department website, is the drop a dime line, very important. I've talked about that. There's a lot of crime watches in here from Ward Five and actually Seven. Can't point them out because it's secret. Six, there's a few here. So, the routine, it's very simple. Call or log or log on to crimewatch@brottonpolice.com. Drop a dime, very important part of the program. Strictly anonymous. Access that for any tips you may have of issues that are going on in your neighborhood that have been going on for a while. Do not use the drop a dime, as recently as yesterday, when I was printing off the drop a dime tips. Do not use that line for 911 issues. Or for actually a disturbance. Loud neighbors send the police. They won't be coming. You have to call the non-emergency line at 508-941-0200. Or if it's an emergency, 911. One quick update on the contact info. We have a new phone system at the police station in the drop a dime phone line. 508... Got to make sure I get it because I don't have to call it. I think it's 941... So, you'll see that on the website. It's unavailable right now. The issue is the new phone system. You could go on, you could send me tips by way of clicking on and writing anything you want, strictly anonymous. If you called and left a message, it's not going to pick up because the system, the new system we have with that number, allows somebody to call. And I had a person who had mental health issues. This particular person called 1,000 times. And the system, the new phone system we have at the station, took every single message. Every one. And these calls were made in three days. That's the type of illness this person had. She's been calling the line, my line, for seven years. Seven years. So, the old system would stop it at 20. The bad news is if you tried to call, you couldn't get through because it filled up the phone bank, 20 calls. And I would play the messages, and it would, there'd be a message saying, "Phone filled up, no further messages." The new system took on every single call. I can't operate that way. I can't, it's impossible. And not only did I spend like two hours deleting, when I came back the following night, there was just as many calls again. So, the 508, to the viewing audience, 941-0244. Don't do it. Log into your computer, the drop a dime link. The, it's actually, it's actually brocctonpolice.com. You'll see that link, and it will pop up, and it will ask you, strictly anonymous, it will ask you for the highlights, description of ex-people, description of the house you're talking about. Very simple, painless. Do that, and they'll print those reports. The chief gets them on a bi-weekly basis, and he delegates the assignment. If there's a drug issue or narcotics, we follow up. And as you know, you've been reading the newspaper, this drug bust is, every week in this city, there's another bust. A lot of that information comes to the tip line. So, keep up that good work, and I'll be here for the Q and A.
Thank you, thank you, Officer Healy. And I also wanted to give our state representative, Jerry Cassidy, a chance to give any state update, if you'd like to, or to present to the... I'm sorry? Well, after that, we're going home. You're all set? Okay. And of course, we want to give our representative from the Southeastern Regional School Committee, Mark Lady, would you like to give a presentation or any kind of update or anything at all? Okay, all right, that's great. And I want to actually officially and publicly thank BCA for coming and staying the whole time and taping this and making sure that the folks at home don't miss this important information. So, thank you, gentlemen.
One thing, talking about state rep Cassidy, he's really carried on a tradition of Mike Brady and the late Tom Kennedy. And, you know, we want to reelect Jerry. He's doing a good thing for the city of Brockton. So, we want to...
And again, in the interest of time, actually, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Steve, but are there any BIMA updates or anything?
Phil, I'm sorry, I really don't have anything tonight to speak on.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just wanted to give you a chance. All right, so in the 20th minute or so, and again, I want to be respectful of your time, and I want to give folks a chance to ask a question. So, if you have a question, you want to just maybe come right here and ask a question. We don't have the sound system.
Do you have a list? Do you have a list of people on the list already?
I'm sorry?
Yes, it's a page, it's a sign and speak.
No, that was the sign and list. That was never a sign and list to speak. If you'd like to speak or ask, if you'd like to ask a question. It's to ask a question. And I would like to just to wrap this question and answer. We have questions of our presenters first. If anyone has a question of our presenters, there was a lot of information that was shared tonight, so I'm sure it's all in your head. If you have a question for our presenters, please let's hear that first. To expect their time.
In often meetings rules, I mean, you can talk as much as you can, right? So, I, Mr. Burns, she's the city councillor.
Go ahead. And I ask that you address it to who you're asking.
I'm not asking to any, I'm speaking to the resident of Brockton, to the city council and so forth.
Okay.
You know, Brockton is a city that has changed. I've been here since 1996, and I see the change. It's the face, color, race, religion, so forth. And hopefully, it's going to keep changing. And I think it's time for us to be aware of that and acknowledge that. And also to acknowledge divisions among us when we come to a lot of issues in Brockton. I have spoken many times, look at the room, okay? We have a city where many people speak different languages. All the information, like the police department information, it's great information. But those do not speak the language, how they can access the information. Those have no computer or internet home, which you should not assume everybody has. How can do both that? When it comes to BIMA and so forth, the fire department and so on, there's a lot of issues. Like when the fire happened in that building, the antique building. For us, and don't you know anything about it? The pollution, the air, and so forth. So, we have, we have a long way to go. You might be doing a great job inviting people from other cities from your back porch from Boston to come. But we need to start doing homework here in Brockton. Among us, that's first, and then we go out. Now, we are a city of immigrants. I do not hear there's Indian natives or any... I don't think there's a reservation in Brockton at all. So, we all, we all came here one time. We came here. And we ought to respect immigrants too because we work very hard from Brockton, from City of Brockton. And the issue I want to put in front of you is about Trust Act. As a man of faith who came to this country to work, immigrants and refugees, it's my duty, my responsibility to protect them as much as I can. As much who came work at the police department, the DA, the school, we have to feel comfortable now to walk the streets of Brockton, to call the police department, whatever it is, to go to the school. You know, I do have people come who instead call 911, they call me. I go to those houses. And I have cases when the police had called immigration. And I can show you, I have that in my file. I got a case. So, I think it's a time for you city councillors, state reps and others, listen to us. We're good people, we met well. I've been here since 1996. All I do is work in helping young people in schools, jails, and so forth. You all know that. So, I hope you open your hearts, your minds, and work with us as immigrants, as minorities, black and brown, in City of Brockton, make Brockton better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bishop, thank you. Further questions?
Billy, I just had a technical question so that we all know. When and if the time comes to clean up that 500 tons, did you say, of contaminated soil? I take it there are plenty of safety ads put in place so that when the soil is disturbed, we don't have anything to get on with trucks from the city. People don't have to worry about respiratory issues or other issues that might untangle it with how it's done.
Right, so I want to thank you again for opening up the forum often because these projects are run privatized. All we see is what's incoming. Sort of like when someone files something with a conservation commission, and they go away, and then we never hear anything. But, you know, I'm really taking this moment to kind of possibly reflect, and obviously, there's a great turnout here, a lot of interest. This is going to be a very important project to advance the need for assessment. But the assessment has been done. We've been able to demarcate what needs to come out. And now it's time to basically empower CXX to do the right thing, which is clean up that soil that's contaminated. What I would really like to do, and with your permission, I'll definitely contact CXX tomorrow, first thing. And I would basically talk to them to see if we can start bringing about a little bit of community awareness. In other words, more than happy if party wishes to not have a community forum, DEP will do it. That's not wrong. You know, we can start with providing basic information in terms of what we found, here's the map, what needs to happen. Because I think it's very important that everybody's prepared, ourselves included, when is this work going to happen? Often, we have DEP officials right outside to ensure that we don't have future dust issues, that the truck route traffic is negotiated, and it's done in a way that is not impacting the local residents, school departments, the children that will be obviously walking back and forth to school. We want to make sure that there is no detriment to the quality of life. Conversely, we also want to make sure that they do the right thing at the right time. And from Mass DEP's perspective, we are very motivated and encouraged to ensure this work happens within the next two years. And I think that's the next milestone by which this work would happen. So, I promise you, I'll get back with you with regards to setting up a community forum. It could be a smaller group. Certain people might have different kind of information that they wish. They don't want to really know it all. They just might want to focus on one thing, and maybe we can set up some informational tables and make sure that any confidential questions are asked that we can be of value to resolve any questions. So, I will get back to you tomorrow, I promise. And make sure that I will make that contact to see if they're willing to come in. And I think that our cadis does have a Massachusetts licensed sex professional. She operates in Massachusetts or New Hampshire. I'll be sure that we can come back and make it a good time for everybody to get together and answer all those questions, which are very good questions, and Mass DEP included. We also have those questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you again for that. Jane, do you have a question? If you'd just come right to the middle so that we can catch it.
I will. Can everyone hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Excellent. So, I have three topics I want to address. Two are comments, one is questions. The first relates to the fire department. Chief Williams, nice to see you. Just as you were speaking, a thought came to my mind. And I know that this would never make you popular, and I apologize for that. But I am aware that in many industries But I am aware that in many industries and in many institutions and in many jobs, people request their vacations. And obviously, it's a seniority matter. And the way that it's done in many places is, is that you request your vacation, and it's based upon seniority whether you get it or not. Which means that some people don't get to take summer vacation. Now, I know that that would be unpopular for you, but however, I ask you to consider that as an idea to decrease the amount of overtime. And I suspect the same would apply to the police department. I realize it would be difficult, not popular, but at the same time, it is done in many other institutions. I know within the state, many of the prison systems, many of those guards do not get to take summer vacation until they have the proper seniority. And that's because if everybody is allowed to take their vacation during the summer, it's going to create unnecessary overtime, which the city cannot afford. I throw it out to you. I apologize, it won't make you popular, but I ask you to consider that, and I hope the police chief will as well. Next point and comment is in regards to, well, it was to be to Pat, George Lawton, but he's not here. So I just will throw to you, Councilor Powell. How do you do?
She's gentle now.
And again, more of a comment than a question. It would have been a question to Mr. Lawton. It's more of a comment to you, because I know you're working hard, along with the rest of the councilors in regards to code enforcement. But I point out one thing. I have repeatedly gone by the Board of Health office. And not once has that dumpster been properly enclosed since I have gone by it. Now, the department that is in charge of the enforcement of the regulation is not even enforcing the regulation, and it's an open violation. I would respectfully suggest that a way in which for us to get code enforcement up to speed in the city is if, in fact, the people that are responsible for the enforcement actually start by following the law and leading by example. Okay, thank you.
You were gentle, that's all right.
And I know you'll follow up on that.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Go by tonight. The gates are still open. And they were open this morning and every other day that I drive by. So question to, um, thank you, Councilor. Question to Ms. Garcia-Serrano. When did the DEP get involved or notified as it related to the city going on to the CXX property? What date?
All we had, all we had is a notice of intent. First, let me back up. On April 1st, I think we took the word to change. However, we did issue a notice of noncompliance. It was issued to CXX in New York on April 1st, 2016, because there were certain documents that needed to be submitted and had not been submitted. That submittal necessitated their incoming, putting together a report, which is the, what we call the Phase Four. That's where all the alternatives are, and the selection of an alternative, which is the soil excavation. For them to excavate, they need to do some clear brushing, tree and the shrub clearing, which basically necessitated for them to go to the local conservation commission. We don't really tell them how to do it. We issued the notice on April 1st. They went to the cons comm. They, we received the notice of intent, a copy of it, because it's filed locally. And then Brockton provided us with a copy of it. Mass DEP received it on July 19. That's what I have on my file. So July 29, I'm sorry. So this is, the date stamp received, July 29. That's when we understood that there was some tree clearing.
Was the DEP on site at the tree clearing on June 27?
No.
So Ms. Garcia-Serrano, I have to share with you a few things.
Sure.
At a city hall meeting, at a city council meeting, the mayor, I believe, may have been someone else, but to these councilors, someone represented at that meeting in public forum that there were DEP representatives on site on June 27, when they went on to that property. Please hear me up, because I want you to hear all of this.
Sure, that'd be great.
In addition, you had that notice in April.
Now, we issued the notice.
And there was conservation land on that property in April and for the months after to today's date. Despite the fact that that was conservation land and wetland on there, nobody went to the conservation commission to do a notice of intent or to do anything as it related to the protection of that wetland. I tipped afterwards until they had already gone on and disturbed the land in that wetland area. Now, they then, just so you know, and I ask you to investigate this. They then, when I say they, the city, after they went on to that property, proceeded to then claim that there was an emergency that had prevented them from properly going before the conservation commission. Respectfully, I don't believe that that's true, and I have all along believed that. Your information assists me in further believing that. It was not an emergency. And in addition, you should be aware that the city indicated at that same council meeting that they knew as of the 20th that they were going to go on to that property. And despite that, and one of the members that was going on to that property is on the Board of Health and also on the Conservation Commission. But despite that, nobody went to the Conservation Commission, and they could have gone to an open meeting of the Conservation Commission on June 23, and yet they didn't. Instead, they went on to the property and then filed this quote-unquote "emergency" request in July. So I ask you to look into this.
I sure will.
I had not contacted the DEP to date, because I was led to believe, from the meetings I attended and from what was said at Conservation, that DEP was on site. And so I had not contacted you. I was going to contact the Inspector General, quite frankly, but I was...
I'm going to interject really quickly, if you don't mind, Jeanne, because we have to be respectful of the hour. But she's here actually to take those concerns. So, and I don't want to not give her a chance to respond if she wants to, but at the end of the meeting, if you want to exchange information, then she can look into that further and make sure that she gives you the up-to-date information. Because again, she is here kind of filling in. I contacted her very, very late about this whole thing. And I mean, she's the head in charge, so she needs to get that information as well. And again, I don't want to speak for her, but definitely.
I will address the rest of my concerns as it relates to that.
Sure, that sounds great.
Well, can you do that with her personally to give other people a chance? Because I know that Debbie has a question.
One more thing, one more thing on that information. One more thing. There are people that are neighbors. I don't know if it's here or not tonight. But there are people that were, their lives were turned upside down by the behavior, and they had strong concerns about the dust and all of that that was done on that property for the precise reason that they believed that there was toxins in that property that they may have already been exposed to by what took place. Those people have those concerns. I bring those to your attention as well. We will talk about those when I speak with you as well. But I want this group to understand and know, this is what happens. And this is when you come to those meetings, you learn and you gather information that brings it to light.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Just to be clear, that's why I reached out to the DEP. That was my question, that residents came to me like, well, what about all of these things in the air? Are we breathing in something now that they cleared this and they've disturbed this area? So that is the reason why I contacted them. But unfortunately, the person who dealt directly with it wasn't able to come, and Ms. Serrano was gracious enough to come in their absence. So I do want to thank you. And she is committed, and her department is committed to, again, opening those lines of communication, having a dialogue about what's going on. I learned a lot from what she just said that we all probably should have known already, but we'll talk about that tomorrow. I do want to recognize candidate for Clinton County Sheriff, Scott Becky, has just joined us. And we're still in question and answer together. Being respectful of folks' time, I mean, you got other things to do maybe, or just want to go home.
I just want to say that she gave me all the papers, so I'll pay copies if anybody would like to get it.
Excellent, everybody's familiar with Juliana and Community Connections, okay? Thank you, Juliana, appreciate it.
Could I make a quick comment?
Uh, actually, Debra, first.
I'm up here, thanks.
So I'm here tonight to present to the council. Thank you for, I want to say thank you first for holding this meeting for all of us to attend. My name is Deborah Garland. I reside at 43 Sprague Ave, Brockton, Ward 5. My mother is a 52-year resident of Martland Ave, which is on the north side of Brockton, and would be directly affected by the changes at Walker's Playground that are proposed. On July 7th, 2016, at the first public meeting about possible improvements to Walker's Playground, there was not a consensus of the attendees about the potential redesign of the playground. Some were in full, some were in favor of a full-size soccer field, others were not. To learn the wishes of the community with a focus on the people who actually live there around the playground, we conducted a door-to-door survey with a petition. We are submitting that petition to you with over 200 signatures from butters and residents against the proposed changes. What we learned from talking to those residents who live around the park, the existing playground, is that there's a strong desire to keep and improve the existing baseball field. The residents also said they would like to see an upgrade to the basketball courts, the play area, and perhaps a smaller, mid-sized soccer field be added for the children to enjoy. The overwhelming majority felt that there were other spaces in the city that would be more suited to a full-size soccer field or complex. If you replace some of the existing courts and fields with only soccer fields, you would be taking away the only playground on the north side of Brockton that offers our children a place to engage in their favorite sport. The property was sold to the city of Brockton from DW Field on June 6, 1913. The deed states that the property was sold to the city of Brockton for use as playground use. And we feel it should be maintained as a multi-use playground with the intent to include all the children in the design. We all want to improve our playgrounds and outdoor spaces for all our children. Improvements will only enhance children's quality of life by providing them a safe environment to play and thrive. As we all know, city streets are unsatisfactory playgrounds. We are thankful for your efforts to improve the green spaces in our community as we believe that the quality of life of residents can be improved and enhanced with access to green space and playgrounds that are maintained for the enjoyment of the people. However, we also believe that the wishes of the people who have lived close to those green spaces and who will be welcoming Brocktonians from all corners of the city who might use it need to be listened to and heard. We know that there will be additional public meetings, hearings, where the city and park commissions will seek input from residents once again, and that any funding authority or agency of the Commonwealth of Mass will also want to hear the voices of the residents who live around the park area to what their wishes and for what they want to see in Walker's Playground. We look forward to sharing our information in this petition with the city, the state, and other potential funding sources at that time. Thank you all for helping to make Brockton a vibrant and livable city, and we look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Debra. Uh, I think, was Angel next, or? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
I have a question and a comment.
You should be.
My name's Kevin Kurnan from Ward 7. I have a question for Ms. Garcia-Serrano. The site with the fire, the antique building, it's, it's asbestos. That's covered right now. Is there an abatement plan in place already?
There is.
At what point is the project slated?
I believe already the EPA is deployed to take out all the debris. But I tell you what, I really would feel a lot more comfortable if I had your information, and I can send you electronically if you have the access.
I'm actually busy, that's my best.
Yeah, that would be great. Because I know it was a quick fire that just basically warranted mutual aid from a lot of communities. I mean, it was pretty horrific. And all, I want to speak for fire, but I can tell you, from the emergency response standpoint, we pretty much kind of stand back and we let the lead emergency responder make the decision as to how to address and contain the fire. After that piece happens and everything has been sort of stabilized, then Mass DEP steps in, our emergency response homes. And we do all the sampling, and I know, I believe, and I was actually on vacation when that happened, but I believe that we had ambient air equipment deployed. So I would be more than happy to provide you with any and all information that's in our possession. And moving forward again, we're very grateful to the federal government that stepped in. We called them, we made that referral immediately. They came out, which is wonderful, because it's very costly and expensive to dispose of debris, asbestos debris.
Well, I mean, it's safe to assume that because there was a fire, a lot of water was used.
Yes.
And that's the way you control asbestos fibers. Would it be safe to say that the fire account was fairly lawful?
Yes, absolutely. And again, you know, it's one of those situations that I, you know, I would defer to the chief. But often it's, the exposure pathway, it's really inhalation of the fibers. If it's there, if it's asbestos, but you don't crunch it and you don't have that suspended fiber situation, then no exposure equals no risk. I don't know if you wish to...
Can you hold the chief's, like, caption here?
Majority, if not all of the asbestos was in the siding of the building.
Right. Not transited?
It was a large majority of the siding that didn't even burn. So, I mean, again, it was monitored. We were concerned for our people, and it was checked. Again, after the building was demolished the next day, DEP was on scene to monitor it.
Well, but being transited, unless it was pulverized, because people don't have to worry.
Exactly. But again, more than happy, you know, to provide you with any and all available public information as to how we manage the response and follow-on actions. I think maybe that's your concern, and more than happy to help and work with you in any capacity.
I have a comment. I, I was unable to attend the meeting the other night, so I just had some comments regarding the Trust Act. This is very short, very short, very short. I'm going to stick right, that's why I wrote this down, because they tend to go off on tangents. Well, I also, someone else was actually allowed to speak on that, so I just liked that opportunity. On paper, the Trust Act looks like a viable way to make the city of Brockton a safer place by encouraging illegal immigrants to come out of the shadows and work with law enforcement to identify the bad guys, get them off our streets, and eventually out of the country. Am I correct on that? That's based on my research. That sounds about right. It's that it sounds good, but the audience doesn't address the real issue, which is illegal immigrants living in the city. In reality, the Trust Act essentially gives illegal immigrants immunity for information. Doesn't give them any incentive to take the next step and do what's necessary to become a legal citizen. It protects them. Since when did the rights of illegal immigrants become more important than the rights of natural-born citizens? Or for that matter, immigrants who came to this country legally? What do you tell those people? Those are the people who came to this country following the immigration laws as they are currently written, doing what was necessary to be here legally, whether it be obtaining a green card, a work visa, or a school visa, finding a sponsor, filing the paperwork, spending the time and money to allow them a path to citizenship. What do you say to them? Well, you really didn't have to go through that process. You could have just crossed the border without doing that. Really wasted your time and money. Immigration laws are really just guidelines, but nobody follows them. What the Trust Act or other, like ordinances, really do is protect the illegal immigrant immigrants until the federal government grants them amnesty. Allows them to skip the line, give them a fast-track citizenship, citizenship without all the hard work. That's a slap in the face to those who took the time to do it right. Instead of pushing for the Trust Act, let's start over and try to come up with a plan that works for everybody, not just for some of you. Let's find a way to work with state and federal authorities to identify those people who want to be here, who need some guidance. It could be as simple as getting a green card expiring, and they're afraid to go get it renewed because they're afraid they're going to get reported. And hopefully this will expose all that are here simply... And hopefully this will expose all that are here simply for the free stuff, or other nefarious reasons. If we can do this, if we can take a school system that was one of the worst school systems in the state, and make it one of the best school systems in the state, we can find a way to deal with this problem head-on. Okay, let's be at the forefront of real change. At the risk of sounding corny here, we are the City of Champions, champions and leaders, not followers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Angel and Tracy next, and then we're gonna call it a night, because we have three minutes, and I want to, again, respect your time, we have, the schedule says we're closing at 8:15, so-
So, Tracy gave me her turn, and Angel said that I could go.
Excellent, you're the closing remarks.
Oh, no, no, I'm still going.
He's going, so shoot him.
I'm gonna be one minute.
Okay, wait, I thought you said that they gave you, they don't give you-
Tracy gave her, not me.
Okay, so, she just said she still wants to speak.
We're wasting time.
Exactly.
Okay, say, "Goodnight." And I do want to thank the gentleman that just spoke, yes, I agree with him in some parts, I would love to all of you and anyone that would like to work with us on immigration reform, which is something that I have been working on for 15 years, I would be glad to share with you any and all information I have regarding the efforts that many of us have worked towards, to ensure that there is an opportunity for people that are in this country to be able to apply for a path to citizenship. However, some of the information and things that people wish would be, doesn't work like that, immigration system is very complicated, and in some cases, if people speak about things that they don't know, they might confuse everybody else. So, yes, if there was a line, I would probably be the first one volunteering to work with each and everyone in the city that I know who are undocumented, along with hundreds and hundreds of people in the surrounding towns that I know that are undocumented, that work very hard, and in some cases are serving your coffee, are cleaning your bathrooms, are taking care of your children, and in those cases, yes, I love your support, and I will very soon put together a flyer, so we can have an open conversation about the topic of immigration. It is a very important topic, because as we talked about in the past, and Bishop said, I don't think anyone here is full 100% Native American, but I would say that in some cases there are people here that have some Native American, and for those, I thank even more for your support. I won't say too much, because there is too many people to speak, but I will say that I do have a letter from BF and CR, F and CR for now, asking for the support for the Trust Act, mostly because it's proven, and there's research, that shows that women that are in domestic violence situations are less likely to report their abusers if they know that there's a possibility for them to be deported. And that is a very, another very complex topic that I won't discuss right now. I will share something just to finish my sharing time, is that me myself, I have never, ever, ever shared this before, but I myself was undocumented, and while I was at Brockton High School, I was in an abusive relationship, of which I never, ever asked for help, mostly and the only reason was because my boyfriend was undocumented. Therefore, I have, for the past 15 years, worked very closely with Pat Callahan, Ruth Zachary, and I can name you many, many more, to ensure local Brockton young, old, and all, women that are in domestic violence situations get the help they need. So, I'm gonna close, and I'll pass to Angel.
It's 8:15 now, that's the time I comment, if you have to leave, thank you so much for coming, if you would like to stay and hear the last, the absolute last two speakers, you're free to do so. So, again, thank you, if you have to leave, then, Godspeed and safe travels.
All right, thank you councillors and the public and all the elected officials that are here. First of all, no human being is illegal, first of all, no human being can have a legal designation, I just want to clarify that.
If you have to-
Short, short, but I just want to clarify that publicly. Second of all, yesterday there was a police dialogue with the community, and I asked the chief of police, what kind of violence, criminal activity do immigrants, whether undocumented or documented, engaging in the City of Brockton? And he replied to the best of his ability, "There are none." All right, so this rhetoric of immigrants being criminals is false. So, that's all I want to say about the Trust Act, I know this is not the forum, but we are having a ballot question when we vote for the president, that is question two, that has to do with charter school expansions. And Brockton Interfaith, of whom I work for, is hosting a community forum with Families for Excellent Schools, who is for the expansion of charter schools, and Save Our Public Schools, who is against the expansion of charter schools. It's Tuesday, September 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30, and I encourage the public, it's an opportunity to hear both sides of the issue, so that you can be informed come November, when you cast your votes for the president, for the sheriff, and the ballot questions. Thank you. It's gonna, thank you, it's gonna be at Brockton Interfaith, 65 West Downstream. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have two questions and a comment. First, my comments are to all of you, especially councillor Sullivan. A few years ago, I talked to you all about my street, I live on Court Street, I don't have sidewalks, it's very dangerous. You actually made a comment to me that you were willing to come out to my street. I reached out to all of you. The only councillor who responded to me and walked my street was Shayna. Now, today, when my husband and I were driving home, as every day, there are kids walking in the street, it's like they're bowling pins, and sooner or later, a child is going to get killed. The city redistricted the school department years ago, when they built the Baker School, but none of you took into consideration that the children between Ward 5 and Ward 6 in the Baker School area were now all walkers to school. I reached out to every single one of you, and like I said, the only one who responded was Shayna, and I've spoken to Jeff and Michelle DuGatlin. But when I say something there, I'm gonna say, "Thank you councillor Rodriguez, for your support on the Trust Act." I'm really proud of you, and I'm proud to have you as a city councillor, it takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing and to fight for the justice of the people in Brockton, and it's sad to say that the people who are impacted by this, they're not here. This crowd right here does not represent our city, and to me, that's disheartening. Thank you.
If I could remind everybody, we meet the first and third Monday at 7 o'clock, there's a finance committee meeting. Very rarely do we have a packed audience, we'd like to see more people. The second and fourth Monday, 8 o'clock, full city council. All Mondays, all 11 of us are there, please join us.
Thank you all for coming, again, Godspeed, have safe travels, we'll all be here for a few moments, if you have any follow-up questions, special thank you to Ms. Serrano, and goodnight.